And we're live.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Hershey Area All Things Diversity, a free series of programs to create awareness and promote acceptance and inclusion in our community. I'm Susan Court, a member of Hershey Area All Things Diversity. Our organization, as you may know, is coordinated by members from Dairy Township, the Hershey Story Museum, Dairy Township School District, Milton Hershey School, The Hershey Company, Penn State Health, Hershey Entertainment and Resorts, and The Hershey Trust Company. Tonight's presentation is "Supporting Transgender and Gender-Diverse Youth." Our speaker, Amy Kiesling, is a licensed clinical social worker and will explore assumptions and reactions to gender identity, gender expression, and sexual identity, and what we can all do to be a little bit more educated and understanding. Now, we invite you to post your questions in the chat, and we will share your questions with the speaker at the end of her presentation tonight. Now, I'm going to turn things over to my colleague Amy Ziegler, who's going to introduce our speaker. Amy?
Thank you very much. Amy and Amy. As Susan mentioned, Amy Kiesling is a licensed clinical social worker with over 30 years of experience working with individuals, couples, and families. She earned a bachelor's degree from Dickinson College and received a master's degree in social work from the University of Pennsylvania. A member of the World Professional Association for Transgender Health, the primary focus of her work has been in the provision of gender-affirming care to transgender and gender-diverse people. Ms. Kiesling recently left the world of private clinical practice to become the coordinator for the new Pediatric and Adolescent Gender Health Clinic at Penn State Health Milton S. Hershey Medical Center, serving the needs of transgender and gender-diverse children, adolescents, young adults, and their families. We are thrilled to have you here with us tonight, so with that, I will turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Amy and Susan, and welcome everybody out there that I can't see. I'm delighted to be here. My name is Amy Kiesling, and my pronouns are she/her. I don't have any disclosures, but in the interest of full transparency, I do like to point out that I am a white cisgender heterosexual female, and I do not speak as a person of lived experience, but as an informed and affirming ally. I initially came to this work a little over 20 years ago due to a family member who transitioned, and I have stayed here ever since. It is a wonderful population to work with, and I'm very happy to be here tonight to give you a little bit of information, actually, to throw a whole lot of information at you about gender diversity. So, I am going to share my screen. Okay, so, this is me. So, our objectives today are to explore the assumptions and reactions to gender identity, gender expression, and sexual identity, help you understand the broad spectrum of gender diversity and the accepted best practices in gender-affirming care. Hopefully, at the end, you will be able to identify the two most important actions that can affirm gender-diverse people, regardless of your relationship to them, and you'll learn a little bit about the Gender Health Clinic at Penn State Health. So, just as some background, according to the Trevor Project, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people ages 10 to 24. And in a 2015 national survey, the percentage of high school students who seriously considered attempting suicide was 14.8%. But for LGBT students, it was 42.8%. And as you can see, that is a dramatic difference. This is a population that is extremely vulnerable and for a lot of important reasons. So, being affirming and understanding this population is incredibly important. So, a question for you to ponder: How do you know your gender? So, give some thought to that. Some of the answers that I get are: "My parents told me." "I always knew." "My name tells me." "My physical attributes and genitals." "My interests." "It just feels right." "My chromosomes." And why are you asking me this? I never thought about it before now. And if you've never thought about your gender, then you have a luxury because gender-diverse people think about their gender all the time. So, let's talk a little bit about the difference between gender versus sex, because they are two very, very different things. So, sex is assigned at birth as male or female. It's usually based on the appearance of external genitalia. And when the external genitalia are ambiguous, other components such as internal, chromosomal, and hormonal sex are considered in order to assign sex. But basically, a baby is born, they look between the baby's legs, and they declare, "This is a boy, this is a girl." Family goes home and raises their child based on whatever assumptions they've made just on genitalia. And for most people, gender identity and expression are consistent with the sex that's assigned at birth. But for transgender and gender-diverse individuals, gender identity and expression differ from sex assigned at birth. So, I'm going to give you an idea of the difference between gender identity, gender expression, gender nonconforming transgender. So, gender identity is a person's deeply-held sense or psychological knowledge of their own gender. So, a person's gender identity can be the same or different than the gender assigned at birth. And like I said before, most people have a gender identity that matches their assigned gender at birth, but for some, it's different. Everyone has gender identity, not just transgender people. So, all of us have a gender identity. We have a sense of self that's deeply held, but we don't always think about it. Gender expression is the manner in which a person represents or expresses gender to others. It's the external stuff. It's behavior, clothing, hairstyles, activities, voice, mannerisms. You know, is your hair long? Do you paint your nails? Do you wear makeup? What kind of clothing do you wear? And it's all that stuff that we kind of, we look at a person, and we judge all of those things, and that kind of tells us who we think that person is, which may or may not correspond with their internal identity. So, transgender is an adjective. It's not a verb. You don't transgender. A person is not transgendered. A transgender person is, the adjective describes a person whose gender identity or expression is different from that traditionally associated with and assigned sex at birth. So, there are other terms that have been used in the past: transsexual, which is somewhat outdated and much more generationally used with older folks, and trans, which is just a shortened version. But the description for people who are not transgender is cis or cisgender, and cis means the same. So, a cisgender person, when I describe myself as a cisgender person, means that my gender identity matches with the sex that I was assigned at birth, and I don't feel any discrepancy between those two things. So, most people in our society are cisgender. Gender nonconforming is another term that is often used, and it's just a term for people whose gender expression differs from stereotypical expectations, such as a feminine boy, masculine girls, or people who are perceived as androgynous. And this can include people who identify outside of traditional gender categories or identify as both genders. Some other terms that are similar can be gender diverse, gender expansive, and it's really just about there being an umbrella of terms that apply. So, this is a nice, easy graphic that gives you an idea of the different aspects of identity continuum and the four different aspects of each person's makeup. And I like to start with this one because this one is a very binary chart, and binary means male/female. It's either/or, right? So, we have sex, which is your biological makeup, as male or female. So, genes, chromosomes, physical characteristics. Gender identity, what I feel like on the inside. I feel like a man. I feel like a woman. Gender expression is what I show to the world: masculine/feminine. And sexual orientation, which is completely separate from gender identity, is who am I attracted to, who do I like, who do I love? Attracted to men, attracted to women. It's a nice, basic description of that continuum. However, it doesn't really capture everything. So, what I like to use is the Gender Unicorn. And TSCR is a fantastic resource. It's the Trans Student Educational Resources, and they have graphics for all kinds of things. Sometimes, people have seen something called the Gender-Bred Person. We don't really use the Gender-Bred Person because it was plagiarized from the original creator. So, the Gender Unicorn is created by trans folks and really encompasses a whole range of things. So, what I love about the Gender Unicorn is that it shows the whole individual. And it talks about gender identity of this lovely rainbow which is in your head, and it talks about identity as female, male, other genders. So, it can be in-between female and male: man, boy, woman, girl. Gender expression: feminine, masculine, or other. And it's all the outside aspects. Sex assigned at birth, I love that they used a little DNA twisty because that's just cute, and it's right there on top of the genitals, like a fig leaf. That is sex assigned at birth: male, female, or other. Now, intersex is included here. And when we were talking about ambiguous genitalia, that includes intersex conditions. Not all intersex people are trans. Intersex people often have a very strongly set sense of gender identity. But some trans people also happen to be intersex. And then we have physical attraction. And this breaks down physical attraction into physical attraction and emotional attraction because what we know is some people feel both, but some people only feel one or the other. Some people only feel emotional attraction to others, and some people only feel physical attraction to others without emotional. So, this kind of encompasses everything, and you can be physically attracted to women, men, other genders, all genders. It's a very nice, broad umbrella. I use this a lot with parents who come into clinic. It helps them really have a better understanding of what we're talking about because very often, parents are so confused, and they're like, "Well, if my child is this gender, does that mean that my child is this sexuality?" I'm like, "Nope, totally different things." You know, they intersect in a Venn diagram, but they're not the same. So, you know, heads don't have to explode over trying to figure all of that out. So, this is just a sampling of some terms that you're going to see or hear out there in the world. This is not an inclusive list. The terminology changes on a daily basis. I often have kids come in and use a term that I haven't heard before, and I'll always say, "Well, what does that mean to you?" And then I'll go look it up because I've never heard it before, and I have to learn. So, I'm not going to go through all of these and give definitions, but you will hear me use the words transgender. Gender dysphoria is the term that describes a person who experiences a dissonance or a lack of congruence between their external body and their internalized sense of self. So, if your sense of your gender doesn't match with your body, you may experience gender dysphoria to some degree. Not all people have it as a severe experience. Other people have it as a very strong sense of dysphoria. Non-binary is someone who does not necessarily describe themselves as male or female. They may not use the pronouns he or she. They may instead use the pronouns they/them or some other pronoun that you maybe never heard before. Then there's gender fluid, gender queer, gender diverse. We talked about gender expression and gender identity, intersex, cisgender. And then there's these two terms: AFAB/AMAB. So, AFAB stands for Assigned Female at Birth. AMAB is Assigned Male at Birth. And these are the correct terms that describe the sex that someone was assigned at birth. We do not say someone is biologically male or female. We don't say your birth sex. We say you were assigned female at birth, assigned male at birth. I include GLSEN and NCTE. GLSEN is the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network, and NCTE is the National Center for Transgender Equality. I include them on this list because I use some of their resources and include them in this program. So, I want you to know what those organizations are. So, you heard that I'm a member of WPATH, the World Professional Association for Transgender Health. And this organization was established in 1978. It was established as the Harry Benjamin International Gender Dysphoria Association, which is a mouthful, HIBIDA. It was named after a physician, Harry Benjamin. He was one of the first physicians to work with gender dysphoric people. And in 1979, HIBIDA published the first Standards of Care. The organization's name changed to reflect the global aspect of the organization to WPATH. And since 1979, seven versions of the Standards of Care have been published. So, this is version seven of the Standards of Care. The link is below. It is accessible to anyone who wants it. You can download the rather lengthy PDF. The Standards of Care version seven is already out of date. It's been in use for several years. Version eight is actively being edited. The pandemic did slow things down a little bit, but we are eagerly awaiting version eight. One of the things that's really important to know about the Standards of Care is that these are guidelines. This is not a document that is written in stone. And if somebody says, "Well, the Standards of Care say this, and therefore, this is an immovable fact," they're not understanding the purpose of the Standards of Care. So, these are guidelines. These are guidelines for the appropriate medically-necessary care across the lifetime of trans and gender-diverse people. And this might include the assessment and treatment of children and adolescents with gender dysphoria. It includes all aspects of mental health, hormonal therapy, reproductive health, voice and communication therapy, surgery, and lifelong preventive and primary care. There is a whole lot of stuff covered in the Standards of Care, and they are intended to be guidelines for those of us in the field to, you know, have a sense of what are best practices and what are, you know, the important things to keep in mind when serving the transgender population. So, let's talk about this term "transition", which you've probably heard before, and if not, I'm going to tell you more about it. So, transition is the process in which a person begins to live according to their gender identity. It's a process that's different for everyone. It may or may not involve specific medical treatments or changes to official documents. And it's really important for you to know that there's no one step or set of steps that an individual has to undergo in order to have their gender identity affirmed or respected. There are many misconceptions that in order for someone to quote "transition", they have to have had what people say is "the surgery." This is a misnomer. First of all, there are many, many different kinds of surgeries. But more importantly, surgery is not an absolute. Not all trans people want surgery, need surgery, or have access to surgery, which can be very expensive. It is not always covered by medical insurance. So, not all people who transition go through the same steps, and transition is an extremely personal experience for each person. Part of my job is helping people figure out, what does your transition look like? What's important to you, and what's going to be meaningful for you to feel happy and healthy? But the three aspects of transition include social transition, legal transition, and medical transition. So, social transition is both the hardest and the easiest to do because it's very scary for a lot of people. Social transition means maybe changing your name that you ask people to use with you, or telling people what your pronouns are. It might mean starting to look different in your expression, dressing differently. You know, going to work and letting work know, you know, "I'm going to be going by a different name. You know, here's my new name." You know, a kid in school going by a new name, starting to look different. Most of the time, you know, people start off with a small group of people that they share this information with, and then it expands. You know, some people start with their families. Other people, the family is the last to know, just depending on their situation. Legal transition is just that. It's legal documents. So, changing things like your driver's license, legally changing your name, changing birth certificates, passports, social security. You know, anything that your name is on, you might legally need to change. And there are processes that people go through to have that done. And those processes are different depending on the state that you live in. So, in some states, it's really easy; in other states, it's incredibly complicated or impossible. And then there's medical transition, which is basically anything that involves changes to the body through medical intervention. And I will certainly elaborate more on that as we go. But medical transition encompasses things like hormones, surgeries, and some other interventions that apply to adolescence. So, a brief interlude: cheesecake. Do people like cheesecake? I am one of those very strange outliers who does not like cheesecake. I can't eat it. I don't understand why people love cheesecake, but I understand that they do, and I support people who love cheesecake. If somebody that I care about wants cheesecake as their birthday treat, I will serve them cheesecake. You know, I will make someone very happy with cheesecake, even though I personally can't stand it, don't understand why people like it. So, my question to you is, do you need to understand someone's gender identity in order to support it? And the answer is no. We don't. And we do this all the time with other things. We don't understand things about other people or why they are a certain way, but we still support them in who they are. So, look at your understanding of gender identity as you would as understanding someone who enjoys cheesecake, and roll with it. So, I would like to tell you a little bit more about gender identity development and when it comes out for different people because there's different points of realization and identity development in individuals, and it can vary very widely. So, one of the first areas of identity development is in prepuberty. This is, you know, your really young child, a four-year-old, who is incredibly insistent and says, "I'm not a boy. I'm a girl. I'm a girl. I'm a boy." And they are insistent. They are persistent. They are consistent. And a lot of times, people hear, you know, these stories about really young children who, you know, come out as trans at a young age and go through their transition. And this has led people to believe that this is the only way that someone identifies as trans, and that if someone didn't express this at a young age, then maybe it's not a legitimate thing. But this is only one point at which somebody can realize their identity. It is not the only point. So, prepuberty is one time. At puberty is another critical point of realization and identity. And if you think about it, before puberty, all kids look the same, right? You could have a bunch of prepubertal kids running around outside in the summer with no shirt on, and you would not be able to tell who are the boys, who are the girls. And then puberty happens, and bodies start to change, and hormones are flowing. And all of a sudden, someone who really wasn't thinking about it because they were exactly like all their friends, they start to realize that something's different, and it doesn't feel right. For some kids, they're not even that conscious of it. All they know is that they are miserable. And all of us who have either gone through puberty or have children and have experienced puberty as parents, we all know that puberty can be an absolutely miserable time, no matter what. You know, puberty really brings out the best in people. But kids who have gender dysphoria are particularly unhappy. And they don't necessarily know why. And parents may not know why because it's hard for them to articulate why they're feeling this way. And so, sometimes, what happens in hindsight is you have an older adolescent or a young adult, and you're kind of looking back at their history, and the parents are like, "Oh, you know what? This is why you became so miserable, and you were such a happy kid, and suddenly, you became really depressed, really sullen, really angry, and we didn't know why." So, puberty is one of those critical points. Another time is post-puberty. So, someone's gone through puberty, their body has changed. They are realizing that something does not feel right. They are very unhappy or very uncomfortable. And this can happen in late teens. It can happen in early adulthood. It can also happen well into adulthood. And, you know, there is no age limit on recognizing your gender identity. And I've worked with adults who lived their entire adult lives, had families, careers, children, and, you know, 50s, 60s, 70s, realized, "I've been fighting this for my entire life, and now, I really need to do something about this. I need to talk about this. I need to act on this." So, any one of these points is possible, and it's normal. So, you know, I try to put people at ease that it's okay if you didn't know earlier that this was an issue because sometimes, you just don't, and that's okay. But when it comes to adolescents, the key developmental task for adolescents is figuring out, "Who am I?" Right? That is what adolescents are all about. And so, when you throw in gender identity on top of the normal figuring out, "Who am I?", that's a lot to process. And so, teens are carrying a lot. The vast majority of gender identity issues that kids are dealing with in childhood and adolescence are going to be in the social transition category. Yes, some medical issues may be addressed at this time, but mostly, what we're talking about in childhood and adolescence is that social transition, names, pronouns, gender expression, how they look, what they're wearing, who they're interacting with. There are some medical issues, such as puberty suppression, which I will talk about a little later, menstrual suppression, which is literally what it says. It's just stopping periods, and possible cross-hormone therapy. So, for a trans male, that means getting on testosterone. For a trans female, it means getting on estrogen. So, a transgender boy, the transgender is the adjective for the identified gender, not the sex assigned at birth. Okay? So, before I get into this, very often, parents will ask me about a major step in the social transition, which is a child choosing a different name and wanting to go by a different name and different pronouns. And sometimes, parents are really anxious about this, and they're like, "You know, we're really worried about you doing this until you are absolutely sure that this is what you want to do." You know? And I get that because it feels like a big deal to change a name and to change pronouns. But the reality is, this is not a permanent thing. You can change your name and change your pronouns. People have nicknames that they use all the time. And what better way to find out if something is right for you and if something fits you than to try it on for size, right? When we buy shoes, we try them on to make sure they fit. And trying on a different name and different pronouns is a good way to find out if it feels right. You've got to know fairly quickly if it works or it doesn't work. And no harm, no foul if it doesn't work. You can go back and, you know, go back to using your old name and go back to using your old pronouns if you realize this isn't for me. So, I try to let parents know that that can be a win-win situation. So, I'm sharing with you the model local education agency policy on transgender and non-binary students that's put out by GLSEN and the National Center for Transgender Equality. And the reason I put this here is because there are some challenges that young people face in school, which is certainly relevant to their well-being outside of school. So, one of the things that we find in school is that there are challenges due to the medical considerations and identity documents. So, some, but not all transgender youth do need medical treatments to assist their transition. But treatments such as hormone therapy might be unaffordable or not medically indicated or contraindicated for many youths. And surgical treatments certainly... And surgical treatments certainly are not generally available for school-aged transgender youth, with the exception of top surgery for transgender boys who are at a certain point in their transition. Uh, but generally speaking, surgery isn't happening for kids. The problem with this is that some policies that are adopted by schools or even clinicians who are working with young people, what they do is they're trying to require proof of medical treatment as a prerequisite for respecting the youth's gender identity or expression. So you should not be required to show proof of medical treatment in order for someone to respect using your proper name or your proper pronouns or, you know, allowing you to dress the way that you want to dress. All students have the right to be addressed by a name, pronouns, and other terms that correspond to their gender identity. And this is a foundational respect that should not rely on whether a student has had access to a legal name change or a gender marker change on official documents. So clinicians, educators, staff, peers should always use the pronoun and name with which a student identifies or requests. So if a family asks a school to use a different name with their child, they shouldn't have to show proof of a legal name change. Now, that doesn't mean that the school has to change the legal name in the student's record, but everywhere else, it should be changed. The process and cost by which a minor changes their legal name and gender on official documents varies by state. As I said before, some states, it's really easy, other states, it's almost impossible. So it really creates an unnecessary and prohibitive barrier for gender and non-binary young people to require documentation in order to make affirming changes to things like school rosters. Um, and this also includes things like um virtual platforms. So you might notice on on my my name in in Zoom, I have my pronouns listed. I put that there so A, people know, uh, but also so that so that people see that it's okay to do that if they want to. It's it's a welcoming step that you can take. So some things for you to consider. Um, youth choose with whom they share information about their gen- uh gender identity and this varies widely from person to person. Usually their friends are the first to know, as with most things with young people. Um, but if a young person comes out to you, ask them who else is aware and how and with whom they want you to use that information, you know? So who else knows? How would you like me to use your name and pronouns? Where would you like me to use your name and pronouns? Don't assume that a young person has told their parents, you know? If you're not the parent and a young person comes out to you, don't assume that the parents know. In some cases, they might be at risk for abuse, they might be at risk for being thrown out of their home. Um, so you you need to know what that status is. Um, and if a student or a kid is out to a counselor, a teacher, a neighbor, a group of friends, it doesn't mean that they're out publicly. So make sure you check in and do not make assumptions. Just because they're out to you does not mean that they're out to everybody else. In a clinical setting, you know, a therapy setting, medical setting, you should always be asked what name and pronouns they use. And then the chosen name and pronouns should be used when addressing that client, including in the waiting room or at the front desk, if that's their preference. If it's not their preference, go with what they're asking you to do. So in our clinic, we ask people, what is your preferred name? What are your pronouns? Would you like us to use that when we address you? Would you like us just to use that in the exam room? You know, and we find out from people what they're comfortable with. In school, you should adjust the names on class rosters, particularly so that substitutes use the preferred name and they're not given private student information so that they don't inadvertently out a student by using the incorrect name. You know, most of the teachers know, hey, I know this kid's legal name is John, but she goes by Jennifer. But if that's not in the roster and and it's very clear, sometimes substitutes will use the wrong name and out a kid to a class where the kids did not know that this kid was trans. So it's really, really important to make sure that that information is there. Um, guidelines for student privacy under FERPA should prevail at all times. No one is is entitled to medical information about a student unless it is absolutely necessary for them to have that information. Um, misnaming or misgendering a person outs them to others present. So it not only violates the person's privacy, but it can expose them to potential harassment or harm. It is a safety issue as well as a privacy issue. So it's really, really important. Okay, I have a quick video for you. This is by GLSEN.
I'm a transgender girl. I know a lot of people have questions about what it means to be transgender, and I get that. What I tell them is, I was born a boy, but inside I always knew I was female. With the support of my parents, I've transitioned to live every day as the girl I've always known myself to be. Every student should have a fair chance to do well in school, but forcing transgender kids like me into restrooms that don't match their gender identity means a lot more bullying and abuse. And forcing me to use a separate restroom from all the other kids makes me stand out and just makes it worse. School is already hard enough. Schools should protect kids from bullying. They shouldn't be passing policies that create or promote it. We all care about safety and privacy in restrooms. If I can't safely use the restroom, school becomes impossible. I just want a chance to learn, graduate, and make my family proud without having to be scared every time I do something as basic as using the restroom.
Okay, so. Why am I talking about schools so much? Because there's an impact on student well-being. And why did I use bathrooms as an example? Because that comes up all the time. Um, bathroom use was initially brought up as a wedge issue to split the LGBT community um and and um, create some political waves. Um, it has since kind of taken on a life of its own. Here's the bottom line. Bathroom access is a public accommodation issue. And the inability to use the bathroom prevents students from participating in normal daily activities. And avoiding bathroom use can result in medical issues. I have had kids who have said to me, I don't go to the bathroom at all when I'm in school so that I don't have to deal with the situation. Well, that can cause kidney infections, right? Like kids not using the bathroom, that is a health risk. And if you can't function in school, you can't learn. So kids need to be able to have access in order to function and to learn. Gender-conforming kids, non-conforming kids are subjected to tremendous levels of bullying in school. And there's numerous studies that demonstrate that the bullying, harassment, and discrimination faced by trans and gender non-conforming students is pervasive. So according to GLSEN's Harsh Realities Report, nearly nine in ten transgender students have been verbally harassed in the last year due to their gender expression. More than half have also been physically assaulted. However, most, that's fifty-four percent, don't feel that they can report instance of victimization to school authorities. And less than a fifth of transgender students said that school staff intervened most of the time or always when hearing homophobic or negative remarks about someone's gender expression. In fact, more than a third of transgender students report that they have heard school staff make homophobic statements, sexist remarks, or negative remarks about someone's gender expression. This is big. And the bathroom issue is just one piece of it. Since young people spend the bulk of their time in school, what happens to them in school is relevant to their sense of well-being. So if you work with children, if you have children, this is where they spend all of their time. If they're having bad experiences at school, it is relevant to their entire sense of well-being. As far as the bathroom issue goes, the best practice is not to single out trans and gender diverse kids and telling them to use a different bathroom from everyone else. It is to allow kids to use the bathroom that they are comfortable in. And if anyone else is uncomfortable with that, those people can use a different bathroom. So rather than stigmatizing the kid who's different and letting them stand out as, well, you have to use a different space, this that space is made available to someone who is uncomfortable sharing space with someone who's different. It's a pretty important, subtle, but important difference. So a hostile school climate can negatively impact the educational career of trans students. It has an effect on their capacity for employment. Uh, nearly half of trans students report regularly skipping school because of safety concerns. It impacts their ability to receive an education. One in six face a harassment so severe that they leave school. They don't graduate, they have lower GPAs, they're less likely to go to college. Discrimination can also take forms like ignoring or failing to respond to ongoing bullying and harassment, holding the student to strict or unreasonable applications to the school dress code because they they look different and that can result in discipline. It might prevent them from attending class. Um, and it prevents students, again, from using appropriate restrooms or being harassed by teachers and staff or even expelled. So because this is so pervasive, trans students are often reluctant to identify themselves or to report incidents of harassment. And we all know, you know, if you don't tell the school staff that something's going on, if you don't tell your parents that something is happening, how do they know? How can they do something about it if they don't know about it? But the problem is, if the staff at school isn't responsive in an immediate and consistent way and in a supportive way, trans students quickly lose faith in the ability of the system to protect them and they stop reporting it altogether. They just give up. So simply relying on students to self-report, it's not effective enough. Um, it's really important that in our schools, we train staff to recognize bullying and harassment in all of its form, including their own behaviors. Um, I've had countless kids tell me that they're in in class and another student makes a homophobic or a transphobic crack. The teacher hears it, sometimes the teacher even laughs, but the teacher doesn't intervene and stop the behavior. And that's incredibly important that that it be stopped. Um, one of the the impacts of the pandemic on LGBTQ youth is that there are some pros and cons to them not having been in school in person. Um, one of the positive aspects of kids being virtual is that it's allowed a lot of kids to avoid bullying situations. They're not being subjected to that physical harassment by other students. Um, and some kids who are transitioning have been able to do it much more privately than they would have if they were in school. The downside is that there is a loss of peer group interaction and support, which is really critical to growth and understanding of self. Um, and on a virtual platform, if you can't change your name, then that might be outing you, just like a school roster might be outing you. Um, so in practice, what does this mean? Refer to all young people, your own, others, kids. Refer to all young people by the name they choose to use, whether it's a nickname or a completely new chosen name. Use gender neutral terms such as folks or scholars rather than ladies and gentlemen or you guys. Um, and that is so common for us. I mean, I catch myself using terms like, well, you know what? Maybe I shouldn't use that term, I need to to switch to something else. Um, use each person's expressed pronouns, he/him, she/her, they/them. Something else if they share something else with you. I know that this can feel weird sometimes. Um, it can be awkward if it's your own child and you have, you know, fifteen years of history using a certain set of pronouns and a certain name. Um, it is so important and so supportive to make that change. Um, and I get it, like, it it's a process to get used to that. Model this behavior consistently for others and as an example of affirmation. And why, why is this so important? So, um. Let me back up for a second. Um, when when we're talking about virtual communication and and being able to change a name on a platform, a lot of schools are using like Microsoft Teams and the kids' names are in as their their legal name. Um, it's really important to ask the school to change that because that's what's front-facing. Um, but as you guys know, probably, if if you have teenagers, a lot of teenagers are already turning off their cameras when it comes to um virtual experiences, whether it's in school or for counseling. Um, teens have like had enough of being on camera. Kids with dysphoria are particularly uncomfortable because think about, we've all spent a year looking at ourselves on the screen while we're talking to other people. It is a really uncomfortable feeling to see yourself while you're interacting with other people. If you have dysphoria and you're uncomfortable with how you look, imagine what it's like to see yourself on the screen and know that other people are seeing you. So a lot of times, when I'm working with teens with dysphoria and they're triggered by it, they'll say, you know, I really don't want my camera on today. And I'll say, okay, that's fine, you know, as long as I've seen you and I know it's you. You want to turn it off, you want to point it at the ceiling, that's fine. I I I roll with that because it's it's really, really important. So why is the practice of of affirming and using names and pronouns so important? Um, so. We we, I mentioned earlier, the Trevor Project, where the suicide rate for young people, ten to twenty-four, you know, that's that's um fourteen point eight for high school students in general, LGBT students forty-two point eight. When you think about how significant that is, it makes you realize that there are really great implications for the suicide risk in LGBTQ youth. And it's one of the reasons why support is so critical. There's a study from the University of Texas that involve, identified four areas where using a preferred name yields a significant suicide risk reduction. So what we're talking about is something as basic as just using a preferred name, reducing suicide risk. So that's using it in school, at home, at work, and with friends. So if it's used, a preferred name is used in all four of those areas, they reported a seventy-one percent fewer symptom rate of severe depression, a thirty-four percent decrease in suicidal ideation, and a sixty-five percent decrease in suicide attempts. Again, huge numbers. So that's all four areas. So if every aspect of a young person's life is affirming them, this is the benefit to them. But even just one area, whether it's school, home, work, friends, can yield a twenty-nine percent decrease in suicidal ideation. So think about that. If your kid is asking you to use a different name, if a member of your family is asking you, please use a different name, just doing that lowers their risk of suicide. So about names, this is what I mentioned before. What better way to test out a good name but to try on the shoes, right? Try on the shoes that fit, see how they feel, walk around in it for a while, and then make a decision about whether that's what you want to stick or not. There's some additional factors for treatment and support that builds resilience. These are things that can be done in general and by community. Um, acceptance by family of origin is really important. The most important people in our lives when we're growing up are our parents. If we have a positive relationship, a negative relationship, a supportive relationship. So if you have acceptance by your family members, that goes a long way to guaranteeing that you're going to have a successful life. When that's not there, it makes it so much harder. Having a supportive social network, whether it's LGBTQ friends, allies, or family of choice. If your if your family of origin isn't supportive, do you have a family of choice? People that you've decided, this is my family. These are the people that know me and love me and are there for me and invite me for holidays. Um, so creating that supportive social network and having access to and using LGBT-inclusive medical and mental health. Not all medical providers and mental health providers are affirming. It's really important to find the ones who are. If people work with um young people, if you're a behavioral health provider, these are some things that are really important for you to do, normalizing. Normalizing the adverse effect of minority stress, facilitating emotional awareness, regulation and acceptance. Empowering a sort of the communication, it's really hard to talk about this, helping people learn how to do that. Restructuring minority stress cognitions, which is basically those assumptions that people have of how they're being treated, how they're going to be treated. And they come to internalize that and see themselves in a negative light. Validate the unique strengths of LGBTQ people, very, very resilient. Foster supportive relationships and community and affirm healthy and rewarding expressions of sexuality and gender. And it's very important, especially when we're talking about diversity, to recognize that. There is, there's intersectionality of gender and race. Where racism and transphobia collide in in a violent and deadly way. Trans people are subjected to a great deal of of violence. Trans women of color are particularly subjected to violence. In twenty twenty. At least forty-four people that we know of who were transgender and gender nonconforming were murdered. And most of those people were trans women of color. In twenty twenty-one so far, that number is eleven people. And and certainly, you know, unfortunately, it is going to increase as the year goes on. I would like to show you an example of an affirming parent. Some of you may have seen this recently, it really went viral. And I I think it's a really great depiction of how a parent travels from one point of awareness to another.
My name is Brandon Bullware and Chairman, I'll go as quickly as I can. I'm a lifelong Missourian, I'm a business lawyer, I'm a Christian, I'm the son of a Methodist minister. I'm a husband, I'm the father of four kids, two boys, two girls. Including a wonderful and beautiful transgender daughter. Who today happens to be her birthday. And I chose to be here. She doesn't know that, she thinks I'm at work. One thing I often hear when transgender issues are discussed is, I don't get it, I don't understand. And I would expect some of you to have said that and feel the same way. I didn't get it either. For years, I didn't get it. For years. I would not let my daughter wear girl clothes, I did not let her play with girl toys. I forced my daughter to wear boy clothes and get short haircuts, play on boy sports teams. Why did I do this? To protect my child. I did not want my daughter or her siblings to get teased. And truth be told, I did it to protect myself as well. I wanted to avoid those inevitable questions as to why my child did not look and act like a boy. My child was miserable, I cannot overstate that, she was absolutely miserable, especially at school. No confidence, no friends, no laughter. I I honestly say this, I had a child who did not smile. We did that for years, we did that against the advice of teachers, therapists and other experts. I remember the day, everything changed for me. I'd gotten home from work and my daughter and her brother were in the front lawn. And she had, my daughter had sneaked on one of her older sister's play dresses. And they wanted to go across the street and play with the neighbor's kids. It was time for dinner, I said, come in. She asked, can she go across the street? I said, no. She she asked me if she if she went inside and put on boy clothes, could she then go across the street? And play. And i- it's then that it hit me that my daughter was equating being good with being someone else. I was teaching her to deny who she is. As a parent, the one thing we cannot do, the one thing, is silence our child's spirit. And so on that day, my wife and I stopped silencing our child's spirit. The moment we allowed my daughter to be who she is, to grow her hair, to wear the clothes she wanted to wear. She was a different child, and I mean, it was immediate, it was a total transformation. I now have a confident, a smiling, a happy daughter. She plays on a girl's volleyball team. She has friendships, she's a kid. I came here today as a parent to share my story, I need you to understand that this language, if it becomes law, will have real effects on real people. It will affect my daughter, it will mean she cannot play on the girls volleyball team or dance squad or tennis team. I ask you, please don't take that away from my daughter or the countless others like her who are out there. Let them have their childhoods, let them be who they are. I ask you to vote against this legislation.
So that dad just blows me away. That that is affirmation. That is parental affirmation, that is love and that, you know, all parents love their children. Many parents that I work with are afraid for their children, they don't want someone to be mean to their kids, they don't want someone to hurt their child. And so they're scared. And I I absolutely support that, I I tell parents all the time, you're coming from a place of love. It's natural to be scared for your kid, but let's figure out how you can support and affirm your child so that they are happy and healthy. And and can be who they need to be. So there is, there is a practice known as the gender affirming model of care. I'm I'm not going to get into all of the details of it, but basically, the gender affirmative model is defined as. A model that allows children to speak for themselves about their self-experienced gender identity. And provide support for them to evolve into their authentic gender selves, no matter what age. And that includes things like facilitating their self, assessing their status, giving them space to talk about it, explore. And and address areas of stress and and distress. So the gender health clinic operates under a a affirming model. We we accept that children can tell us who they are, we follow their lead, we help them. Explore and learn who they are, we help families learn about this. And try to provide as much support as humanly possible. So it is a collaborative clinic, we encompass counseling, pediatric endocrinology, adolescent medicine, psychiatry. And we are, we are located at the Briarcrest Clinic, we are under the Division of Adolescent Medicine. And we share space with adolescent medicine and eating disorders, so I always tell people, when you come to our clinic, do not be alarmed by the eating disorder sign. We know you're not coming in for an eating disorder, you know, you're coming in because you're coming into adolescent medicine. So we provide assessment. Counseling, family support, referral, education and training, like what I'm doing right now. We work with medical students, we work with residents, we work with other providers. And we order, offer medical care, which may include pubertal suppression, menstrual suppression and cross hormone therapy. So menstrual suppression is, as I said, just medication that stops periods. Menstrual suppression is something that is available to any person who has periods. It does not matter if that person is trans or not. If someone has menses and they are miserable and uncomfortable, you can take medicine to stop that. Kind of wish I had known that when I was in high school, but there you go. So that is something that we offer, along with the the whole range of sexual health, reproductive medicine, birth control, all of those things. Pubertal suppression is a particular treatment that is designed to put a pause on pubertal development. It is basically hitting the pause button, it stops puberty from continuing. And it buys you and the child time to figure out what needs to happen. Where are we in this? What, how do I feel? And the reason that pubertal suppression is important is because it stops the body from developing. In the sex assigned at birth. And creating additional distress for someone who, you know, that may not be the direction they want to go in. But they're not ready yet to do something about that. So pubertal suppression prevents trans boys from developing a chest and starting periods. It prevents trans girls from growing facial hair and getting a deeper voice. There's nothing more distressing to a trans girl who is sixteen than having a really deep voice. And while she might otherwise look female, the minute she speaks and her voice is deep, people kind of look at her funny, right? So pubertal suppression allows you, you hit the pause button. It's time limited, you only use pubertal suppression for a few years. And then at the end of that period, either the young person is ready to move forward with cross hormone therapy. So it would be, you know, starting testosterone, starting estrogen. Or you stop the blocker and the body goes through whatever puberty it was going to go through to begin with. Why is that important? So they did a retrospective survey of transgender adults who talked about who wanted suppression and didn't get it. And what they discovered is that. Those who received treatment with pubertal suppression, when compared with those who wanted it but didn't get it. Had lower odds of lifetime suicidal ideation, again, it comes back to suicidal ideation. There's a significant inverse association between treatment with suppression in adolescence and lifetime suicidal ideation. People are not suicidal because they're trans. People become suicidal because their bodies are doing something that that doesn't work for them. Or because of how people are treating them. And so if we can remediate that and ameliorate that, that's a very important step. So. What is the most important and effective way to support trans and gender nonconforming youth? It's using names, it's using pronouns. If there's any two things that you take away from Mike talking to you tonight, it's the importance of respecting people's names and pronouns. It's shown to reduce depressive symptoms, suicidal ideation and suicidal behaviors. It creates a sense of trust and goodwill. And it's affirming. So some gentle suggestions for you. If you're not sure about someone, politely ask them, what pronouns should I use? If you use the wrong name or pronouns and out someone. You know, yes, you are potentially exposing them to harassment or abuse, but if you get it wrong. Don't make a big deal out of it, just correct the error and move on. So if you use the wrong name or wrong pronouns, to go, oh, my God, I'm so sorry, this is really, really hard for me, I'm so sorry, so sorry, just, just correct it and move on. Do not ever ask a transgender person what their birth name was. The common word that people use for that is dead name. And it's called a dead name for a reason, a lot of times people really do not associate with their their name that they were given at birth. So if you're curious, don't ask, it's it's very, very rude. Also, don't ask a transgender person about their hormones, their genitals, or their surgical status. This is very personal information. We don't generally ask that in polite society of anyone. I don't know the genital status of anybody else that I'm talking to. It's not necessarily necessary to ask this. Avoid questioning or policing other people's restroom usage or choices. And don't gossip or share the identity of a transgender person, even if you think that everybody already knows, right? Again, you might be outing someone. And even if everyone knows there's trans, you shouldn't be gossiping about that, that is, again, that that's somebody's identity. And and be an upstander, don't tolerate jokes or rude remarks about transgender people. Challenge prejudice in yourself and in others, whether it's coworkers or friends or, you know, just people that you see, you know, casually. I I take note that right before this presentation, word came out that Dr. Rachel Levine was. Confirmed as as Assistant Secretary of Health. One of the things that has struck me in knowing Dr. Levine. Is that she has been subjected to some pretty phenomenal transphobia and harassment. And a lot of my clients have watched her and have been really impressed that, you know, she represents them. And it makes them feel good, like they can accomplish something. But the other thing that they've really been impressed with is that she has set an example for them of how to. Approach harassment and cruelty with incredible grace. And and calmness, and I I don't know that I could have responded as calmly and gracefully as she has. But I think that that really sets an amazing example. So if you will indulge me, I have one last video that I would love for you to watch. Because it gives you a really lovely sense of some neat folks.
Is it hard to be trans, Penelope?
Sometimes. On the news says like people are hurting transgender people, especially transgender African Americans, and that makes me scared sometimes.
My hair, I would always try to keep it somewhat long. I was visiting my dad, he said, we're shaving it off. As I'm like crying, he pretty much had to hold me down to shave off all of my hair.
One of the first things that I did after I started. Putting the pieces together and realizing I was a boy was I kept praying, kept asking for guidance. But the pastors at that church were not using my pronouns, they said that they were not going to support me, so we had to leave.
Some people don't know who they are until like a long time. I'm someone who knew who I was quickly. I told mom that I'm not a girl, I'm a boy, she said, okay, you feel like a boy. And I said, I don't feel like a boy, I am a boy.
I think I spent a year being scared, a year crying, I don't think you guys saw me cry, but I cried at night, I felt really guilty, I thought maybe I hadn't raised a proud girl. My mom was saying, you know, if you just put a dress on her, I tried that, I tried to convince Penelope that she was a girl.
I mean, I, growing up, was Republican, Catholic. I remember being really scared, people are mean, will they hurt you, will they hurt us?
I love my dad, but he essentially said, that's wrong, you have a mental disease, you need to be fixed. To be quite honest, it was pretty much hell to be living as myself at home. And to go to school and be somebody else.
God is the most important thing in my life. I had a lot of tough conversations with God about what's happened here, where did I go wrong?
I don't think we could have raised you in an environment that was less conducive to making you think that you were transgender.
My dysphoria got worse, I just hated the constant use of the wrong pronouns and having to pretend that I was a girl.
Reese was really withdrawn, kind of seemed depressed when you told us this. I think it was kind of like, oh, okay, well, if this is what's going on, great, let's figure out how we can. Help you to live life as a boy so that you will be the joyful person that you are.
I'll never forget that first time that you performed as Nicole. When you stepped onto that stage in that dress with a microphone and sang. It was without question a defining moment because I had never seen you in such an authentic way.
The more we watched Penelope year after year after year, now ten years, we realized Penelope is a boy. He's not faking it, he's not pretending, he's not playing devil's, he is a boy.
Do you guys have any memories when you were growing up of him doing anything that you felt didn't really seem like a girl would do?
Yes.
Yes, a hundred percent.
The coach was screaming at me, run after the ball, and I would start skipping. Like doing some weird thing that was exactly what they told me not to do, that was girl stereotypical.
Remember Reese came up to me and he asked, so how do you be a boy? And I started to think about it and then I said, well, you know, gotta use power tools and everything, yeah?
Like gave me some of your clothes.
I wanted to use my clothes, I don't know.
You were imitating your brother from very early on, so if Cassius would stub his toe, you would say, my toe hurt mama. And if Cassius would get in trouble, you would take a timeout.
First thing we did was get you a haircut, so he got a really short.
Got a boy haircut, boy clothes.
Boy clothes.
He looks like a different person now. And I could tell that he was more happy even in that image.
The first time I allowed you to wear a dress and shoes.
In public, I feel like a bird that's been trapped in a cage since the day she was born. And for the first time, got to spread her wings and fly.
Well, I I definitely liked.
Well, I, I definitely liked that I was wearing clothes that helped me pass. But at the same time, I knew that I wanted to dress like more androgynous, but I wasn't sure if I would get the courage to do that. But I think once I started dressing this way, I realized that this, this is more me.
How did you feel about my medical transition?
I couldn't understand the whole blocker concept. But as puberty got closer, as theater and singing became so important, the thought of your voice changing, you not being able to be a soprano and perform, became really, really clear to me.
I remember when puberty was coming, I was like, no, we need to get in there like now. Get this done because I don't want to go through anything.
A lot of my friends were so excited for all the changes. And I was like, why on earth do you want a womanly body like that? Makes no sense.
I think your exact words were, I'm going through puberty.
I've always been the same person. My hair changed, uh, clothing, and that's it.
I think you're the same person. I think what shifted was as I saw you so much more confident and happy. That encouraged me to try to be a better mom for you.
I, I was so happy to have another brother and everything. I, I, I just, it was a really special day for me. Now bonded Reese as a brother and considering him now.
I feel really safe in our community. But if I think about the news, I think, wow, if we just went to a different neighborhood or a different state or different country or a different part of the world, maybe we wouldn't be as safe.
With Reese living his truth helped us to see the truth in everyone else as well. And some people aren't prepared or understand this journey.
Our church didn't support Reese. So we're trying to search for a new church that includes and loves and cares for everybody.
Do you miss your dad?
Yes. And my half siblings and my stepmom, like I miss them. But that love came with conditions.
When you initially came out, I was very afraid of the reaction of friends and family. And now I don't really care about that. What I'm most fearful for now is your ability to see your self-worth and how much your love's valued.
When I felt my child is something that no one talks about, that no one knows, that I don't have any example of, I was really scared. But the more scared I felt, the more I put my energy into changing people's minds.
It absolutely fills me to tell our story, meet with legislators and help other families.
And I think it's our job as a family to come alongside Reese and be a light for people and to say that this is who God made. God made Reese. And it's a special gift to us and a special gift to the world.
I like to let people know that we are a family of transgender people and cisgender people. If people don't like who we are, then they can go someplace else.
I want to make a change and make the world a better place for everyone. So people can just be themselves and don't have to worry about the world around them judging them. They can just be.
So I love those kids. Um, so look, trans and gender diverse young people flourish in a safe and supportive setting. And when we acknowledge people for who they are without judgment, we're providing life-saving support to vulnerable people who are most at risk for bullying, depression, suicide and school failure. So creating an affirming environment for these young people benefits all of us. So that is all I have for you. I am very, very happy to answer questions. And this is my contact information if you need to reach out. But yeah, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that people have.
Amy, thank you so much. That was an incredible presentation. I don't know how you got all of that in and just that little bit of time. But your words were so meaningful and those videos were so impactful. Thank you for sharing all of that. It's, it's hard to imagine after having watched those videos that you wouldn't just have a, a new sense of appreciation for what people go through and what families go through. But as an ally, if you encounter somebody or, or even as a, as a parent or as a child, if you hear somebody push back and say, well, this isn't right. This isn't how God intended it to be. You were born a girl, you were born a boy. Men and women are supposed to be together. How do you handle that? Whether you're the, the, the child or the parent or just an ally standing by overhearing this, how can you help combat statements like that to, to really build a safe space for people?
You know, it's, it's a really good question. And um, I, I think, I think for me, you know, I always walk this very fine line. I, I'm not a theologian, I'm not clergy. So I don't, I, I don't try to get into debates about faith. Um, I acknowledge that people have faith. There's a lot of people of faith who have trans children and are supportive and loving of them. And I, I suppose one could make the argument, you know, God created this person and they are trans. So, you know, if, if you want to follow the God doesn't make mistakes thing, yes, they made the person trans and, and are providing options for that person to be happy and healthy. But sometimes I'll say, you know, maybe, maybe we need to help you find a resource that can help you parse some of the, the religious aspects of this for you.
And, and as that one mom said in that last video, at some point you just seek out other people in your life. If, if that's a relationship that's ongoing and it's, it's a hurtful one, it's time to move on, I would think.
Yeah. It's about love, right? I mean, supporting somebody is about loving them.
We, we have a couple of questions that are in the chat. We want to encourage people who are watching this live to continue to put those questions in. And Amy and I will, we'll get to as many of these as we can with you. So I'll turn it over to Amy for the next question.
Um, our next question is, um, how can you help someone who is transgender or gender diverse that you know is encountering barriers to name changes, birth certificate modifications, or anything blocking them living authentically?
Um, so the answer to that question depends on whether that person is under the age of 18 or older, over the age of 18. If someone is under the age of 18, all you can do is be supportive and give them space to talk about their frustration. You know, maybe help them access things that, that don't require parental permission. But certainly, um, you know, things like a legal name change and documentation changes, you know, require some parental involvement. So very often if someone really is up against a lot of resistance, it's about just helping that person survive until they're old enough to be able to handle it on their own. And then you can step in and be a much more active force of help in doing that.
Amy, what kind of advice would you give to parents or caregivers of children who have stated at a young age or even as a teenager that, that they don't feel like they are the sex that they were born with? How, when do they come to you at Penn State Health? You know, what do they do in the meantime? And how do they help their kids navigate this in a, a supportive way and, and a safe way?
Um, so there's a lot of different paths and, and it kind of depends on, on how articulate and resilient the child is. Um, with young kids, you know, I think allowing them to just explore their expression and their identity and, you know, wear the clothes they want to wear, use the name they want to use, you know, play with their friends that they want to play with, um, and just let them be. You know, be able to access therapy if, if they're experiencing depression or anxiety. Kids come to us at all ages and all stages. We have, you know, young kids who come to us where, um, you know, they're socially transitioning and just kind of keeping an eye on when puberty is going to start so that they can get on blockers at the appropriate time. We have kids who, you know, have started puberty and they're, they're just coming into the process. Um, and we have, you know, kids who, you know, been, been through puberty and now they're coming to us with a sense of frustration and great discomfort with their body. And we're helping them figure out, you know, what's the next step? Not all people need a whole lot of therapy, you know, they just need information. Other people need a space to process what, what they're thinking and feeling to be able to figure it out. I, I currently have a waiting list for therapy. So I try to refer out into the community. There's not a whole lot of therapists out there who do this work. If anybody is listening who does this work and is interested in being on my list of gender-affirming therapists, please, please, please let me know you exist. You know, and if you have a therapist that your child is working with that has been really wonderful about this, again, I would love to know about those folks. So yeah, it varies.
Um, this is a great question. You said that you were an informed ally. How does someone actively work towards becoming an informed ally? And even more importantly, how do you work through when you make mistakes as you're sort of trying to be that person?
So, so recognize your humanity. We all make mistakes. I make mistakes. You know, I have two family members who have transitioned, one as an adult, one as a teenager. And, you know, even though I do this for a living, you know, I can think of at least one situation where I inadvertently misgendered the adult family member. And I could have died, right? But I just kind of rolled with it, you know, I apologized to her later on. Um, it, it's, it's really, it's tough. And um, the best thing I can do for people is to, you know, point you in the direction of some resources. Certainly, you know, read as much as you can. Get involved with organizations. Check out the websites for National Center for Transgender Equality. The, the human rights. I always forget their C, the Human Rights Council, HRC. There are, there's so many different organizations out there. There is a website, um, which is the, the gender-affirming working group, which is professionals who, who work in this area. And it's just a great resource of information. Attend trainings, you know, go, go to trainings. If you're a professional, go to trainings on serving LGBT people. If you're just getting started, connect with the LGBT Center of Central Pennsylvania. They do wonderful trainings on, on hormone, not on hormones, on pronouns and, and identity. So I mean, there's trainings out there and you can just start with the basics and then learn more as you go. There wasn't a whole lot of training available when I started doing this. I had to, you know, learn a lot on my own. And then it started to be much more prevalent. And now it's a lot easier to find training than it was.
Amy, this is obviously not a new thing that, that is happening. This is, but it's something that I think people are now more comfortable discussing. Talk a little bit about, um, you know, the history of this and how we got to a point in our society where we can have this meeting tonight and we can educate each other and love each other for who we are. So just give us a little bit of the history of, of, of this in our society.
I, I, I will give you the best that I can. I am absolutely terrible when it comes to things like, you know, dates and, and events and things like that. But we know that gender dysphoria, transgenderism has been around for as long as human beings have been around. There are plenty of historical figures that, you know, looking back, you're like, oh, that person was trans. Um, or this person was known as a man, but then when he died, they found out that he was a woman, right? And so there's, there's historical figures. Different cultures have different words to describe this notion of, of gender. You know, Native American culture has Two-Spirit, which is, you know, recognizes that not all people are masculine or feminine. In, in our society, it, it was very much underground, very secretive. You know, people that I've worked with who were in their 50s and 60s, you know, there was no internet for you to find other trans people. There was maybe one book in the library that you went to and, you know, vertically looked at in between the stacks to, to get information. There were secret support groups where you had to know someone to get the information on where this group met and the password to be admitted to the room because it was dangerous to be out. And then things started changing. You know, people know about the Stonewall riots and the beginning of the LGBT movement. What people don't always know is that it was a trans woman of color who started it. Marsha Johnson was the first person, you know, so it, trans people have always been present, but, um, you know, even within minority groups, there's a hierarchy. And so trans people are kind of at the bottom of the rung of, of the hierarchy in terms of LGBTQ rights. I think one reason why we're having this conversation today is because information is accessible now in ways that it was never accessible before. The internet has made it possible for people to get information that there's no way they would have been able to get before. It allows people to communicate and, and with each other and support each other and, and create community in ways that simply did not exist before. And so as, as much as, you know, social media is, is a pain in the butt for a lot of people, it's also a blessing. And particularly for people who live in rural areas and don't have access to a large community, this might be the only way that somebody can access information. You know, as, as terrible as COVID has been, telehealth has been an incredible blessing for a lot of my clients who live an hour or two hours or even three hours away and for whom it's an incredible hardship to come in person to a visit. Telehealth has made it so much more accessible for people, even though it's not ideal. So I think, I think access to the internet and, and mass communication has really allowed people to be more open. And the younger generation is much more open and accepting of differences and much more willing to look at someone and go, okay, so your gender is whatever, fine. And it's not a big deal. Whereas, you know, for some of my generation, it's more of a, oh, kind of experience.
That was well stated. I, I agree. And, and I cannot thank you enough for taking time to talk with all of our viewers tonight and helping us collectively build a more welcoming and affirming community. So Amy Keesling, thank you. You're always welcome to come back and join us and talk with us again.
Thank you so much. It's my pleasure to be here.
And if you wouldn't mind, send us some of your resources by email and we will add them to the chat for this video. I know a lot of them were listed in your PowerPoint presentation, but if they're in the chat, people can click on them more easily and, and access them. So, so thank you for that. I want to thank Amy Ziegler for pouring so much of herself into organizing this in every session that we do. So Amy, thank you. And also a big thanks to, to Bar Valinsky and Lauren Turnbull, who were monitoring the chat and helping us with questions tonight. To Brian Blausch from Dairy Township for being our technical wizard as always. We want to let you know that we'll be back in May. Amy, help me, is it May 24th?
Keep talking and I'll tell you.
Okay. So we're going to have a great session, May some date, where we're going to talk about helping your children understand about racism. This is a topic that's hard enough for adults to understand and to be able to, to think through and talk through. But we're going to be actually providing some great conversation around what you can do to help your children understand. Is it the 24th? No?
Can't tell you that. I will tell, um, I will tell you this. Anyone who did register through Eventbrite will get an invitation to the next thing. So, and also we always announce them well, well ahead of time on Facebook. So follow Facebook.
That's good. We are also getting ready to map out our next season, which would start in September of this year. And we're going to keep doing these virtually. It's, it's worked really well and, and lets us involve people from all over. So we're going to be looking at a number of topics, including what we can all do to help stop discrimination and hate of Asian, Asian American and Asian Pacific Islander people. So that'll be probably one of our first topics that we, we tackle in the fall. We also want to give a shout out to the Hershey Company for sending a wonderful basket of Hershey goodies to our speaker tonight. So thank you to them. And we also want to thank all of you for joining us because this is why we do this. We come together as a community, whether we're in person or virtually, to learn how to make our area even more welcoming and affirming. So we encourage you to share this recording with your friends. If they didn't have a chance to, to see it, please follow us. Please follow us on Facebook, stay in touch with us, and if you have ideas for topics, let us know, because we want to make sure that these events that we're organizing are as meaningful as possible to you. Amy, any final thoughts?
No, I just want to say thank you again to Amy. We always try to provide people with action steps that they can do moving forward from these events. We don't just want to have talking heads, and I think that you really provided people with great information, and in addition to helping them understand, also gave them ways that they can also be affirming. So thank you, that was really, really wonderful.
Well said. Thanks, everyone, thank you for joining us, have a great night, and we'll see you again in May.